All right, if I could get a motion to that we discuss only those items, two items we went into closed session for. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, consideration of the acquisition disposition of real property, Pepper's Ferry. And one item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, appointment, town manager.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please ma'am?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quant.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, first on our agenda today is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Quants and followed by the invocation by Councilman East.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your continued grace and mercy this evening and ask that you would guide us in all matters. Please grant us wisdom and may all we do be pleasing to you. In your name we pray, amen.
All right, I'd like to welcome all the guests that are here in person and online. It's nice to see so many faces, smiling faces too. All right, modification to public session, would someone like to make a?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add three items to the public agenda. One item under the holiday schedule. One item under the town manager contract, I don't know why I can't remember that word. And then one item under due from due to accounts.
Second.
May I, before we do that, where would you want to put, where should we?
I think we should put those after our public hearing for the public comment period. Does that make sense?
Okay. And a second. Oh, may I have a roll call then?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quant.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
All right, all right, first thing on the agenda next is Resolution 2023-61. That's going to be honoring Chief of Police Jill D. Nice upon her retirement from the Pulaski Police Department. Whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Pulaski, Virginia desires to recognize and commend those staff members who, upon their retirement, have rendered a career of service to the citizens of the Town of Pulaski. And whereas, Chief Jill D. Nice was hired as a police officer at the Pulaski Police Department on August 17, 1998. And whereas, Chief Nice, during her service, has obtained awards and recognitions to include the distinguished service award for two years, Officer of the Year, and countless commendations. And whereas, Chief Nice represents the Commonwealth of Virginia as a Commissioner for the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. And whereas, Chief Nice has served in successive ranks to include police officer, detective, sergeant, and lieutenant, and has proudly led the Town of Pulaski, uh, Town Police Department, Town of Pulaski Police Department, as its first female chief of police. And whereas, Chief Nice is congratulated on her 25 years of reputable service with the Town of Pulaski Police Department and on her many accomplishments, and now her well-earned retirement. Now, therefore it be resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Pulaski, Virginia, setting in regular session this 19th day of December 2023, that the Town Council extends its sincerest thanks and commendations to Chief Nice for her dedicated service to the citizens of the Town of Pulaski as a member of the Town of Pulaski Police Department. Now, therefore it be further resolved that the Town Council and town employees extend the chief, to Chief Nice, their best wishes for an enjoyable and rewarding retirement if someone would make that motion that we do that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-61, Resolution honoring Chief of Police Jill D. Nice upon her retirement from Pulaski Police Department.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff.
Aye.
Mr. Quants.
Uh.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
And I'm so sorry, I don't have a can of Mountain Dew for you. That's how I've met her, she would come by the station every day and buy, well, almost every day, buy a Mountain Dew. It's okay.
I think there are a number of people here from the department that might like to stand here and be recognized as supporting.
That's.
Jill, yeah. Come on, guys.
Get on up there, huh?
Come on. I know you weren't supposed to be here, but get up here. Come on, Sam, come on, don't be bashful.
I'd say the council should go ahead and get down and get behind him in the picture.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, let's do that, it's a great idea. I had just, yeah, I can't see anyone.
Jack, you're so you get a good picture. Come on, you can do it. Just push the newspaper guy. Oh, wait.
Pretty good. Okay.
And let's get a picture with Jill and her husband and the mayor.
You gotta be, no, I'm sorry.
Darling, got one good suggestion.
I know how to do this.
I think that Mr. Ratcliffe wanted to say something that's unlike him, but.
I'll say just a few things. I can let the kid out of the bag now for y'all's own. Jill was related to me, admired, so this retirement, please runs deep in our family with me retiring, Jill retiring, her husband, who I get to work with again every day. Frank's retired and most, both her brothers are retired police officers. But Jill, Councilman East and I pegged you a long time ago to do this. I come to your house, talk to you about it. And we knew that you could do it, and you was, you was a great chief. Mr. Schumate is taking over a great department. You, you've brought it to the top and I want you to enjoy your retirement, enjoy your old Franklin era. And come see us at Christmas time. Thank you for your service.
And next, I would like to introduce to the council formally our new police chief who will officially assume that office on January the 1st of 2024. But before I introduce him, I want to tell you that Sam has done some research and has determined that Jill is the first female chief who's gone through the New River Criminal Justice Training Academy. And she's the, is only the fourth female police chief in the entire area. So, um, she has some special distinctions in addition to what you read, Mr. Mayor, on the resolution. And now, Sam, if you would come forward. It's my pleasure to formally introduce to you all Samuel J. Schumate. He started work yesterday and he came back today, so.
That's plus.
Good sign.
He comes to us from Radford University Police Department where he has served for over 24 years, including his most recent role as Assistant Police Chief for the past five years. He's also been a Lieutenant of Criminal Investigations, Sergeant of Criminal Investigations, a patrol officer, and, excuse me, a patrol, patrol sergeant and a police officer. In addition to that, he is a veteran, listen to this, on the United States Air Force, the Virginia Armory, excuse me, Army, Armory, no, Armor. Not National Guard there again, I want to say Armory because we've been talking about it today, but it's the Army, National Guard, and the United States Navy Reserve where he spent time as a naval criminal investigator. So he's checked off several boxes in the military area that we certainly appreciate. As his education, he has multiple degrees and many, many training experiences, a Bachelor of Science in Organizational Management and Leadership, a Masters of Science in Strategic Leadership. He's a graduate of the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety School of Police Staff and Command and the New River Criminal Justice Academy. Sam brings a wealth of experience. He, while some might say, well, he's been in a university setting for many years. Sam spent a great deal of time in training as a law enforcement person, so he knows what happens in non-university settings just as much as anyone. He was the unanimous selection of the panel that I had work with me. And in fact, our common law attorney was a representative on that panel. And we were unanimous in our selection and we're very pleased that Sam has chosen to be a member of our staff. And we look forward to a long association with him and with his leadership. And so with that, Sam, if you'd like to say anything to the council, and do you have family here that we ought to bring forward and take a picture?
I have my beautiful wife, April.
And April used to work for us, yes.
Correct, for the police department, that's how I met her. And my youngest son, Blake.
All right, why don't we ask them to come up then? Oh, we're gonna go.
Now, do you want the council again for this or?
Sure, why not? They're gonna sit awhile tonight.
I'd like to have the Commonwealth Attorney join us. Hold up.
Sam, your younger son is gonna be taller than you, I can tell already.
Right already, D.
Yeah, well, from my vantage point.
Yeah, slide over. Can't see ya.
Is he getting in your way, Sonya?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just look forward to the working relationship that the police department and myself just want to have with, with you.
Welcome.
All right, now we'll move to our presentation period. First one up is VML, Vaco Finance, Robert Ludenberg?
Lotterberg.
Lotterberg, Managing Director. Each one of these will be a 15-minute presentation, so.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I believe I have previously shared with you all the fairly recent relationship that the town has entered into with the VML-Vaco Finance activity. They are the entity with which we have very recently deposited a lot of our idle cash, which has proven very beneficial to us with the interest rate that is offered by his group. And one of the services that is available through VML-Vaco Finance is an evaluation of the town's financial health and an effort to do some long-range strategic planning on behalf of the town, particularly as it relates to our capital improvement needs. And so we have been very fortunate to have Mr. Lotterberg as a lead person on this effort. He's worked very, very hard on this presentation. And I think you will be pleased with what he has identified as both the strengths of our town as well as a roadmap for us to successfully move into future financial issues with as much attention as we can to minimum debt service rates as well as growing our own ability to cash fund projects. So with that as an introduction, feel free to give any further background that you would like. But we're very pleased to have you here this evening.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with Ms. Burcham, Ms. Morris on this project. And I'm gonna try to keep to 15 minutes. So I'll spend a little bit more time on the governmental fund and I'll give you some highlights on water and sewer. Underlying this is a, is a forecast based on historical trends in the town, a forecast of your revenues and expenses for these three different funds. And examination of the capital improvement plan as well, outstanding debt and all of that. So your staff has access to more detailed materials. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna present, cut to the chase and present some of the high points here. So, beginning with the governmental fund. What I'll take you through briefly tonight is sort of the steps that we followed in developing a plan of finance. Secondly, we'll look at the, a recommendation for how to execute the capital improvement plan. By that I mean, looking at the projects that the town has planned over the next five years and recommendations as to when you should issue debt, when you should use cash balances, and the timing of those, of those projects. I'll look at credit impacts. If you implement the plan that we're proposing, what, what will that look like in terms of impacts on the credit strengths of the town? And then lastly, some conclusions. So, before I get into this, VML-Vaco Finance, as Ms. Burcham mentioned, is the financial services arm of the Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia Association of Counties. Municipal advisory work is one of the services that we provide. We have on our staff three registered municipal advisors, meaning they're registered with the Federal Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board in order to advise local governments on financing projects. We've, we've structured this as a retainer for the town, so we have a deliverable tonight, but we're also at your disposal for the remainder of the year to, to assist you, assist your staff, to provide updates and so forth. Okay, so beginning with the, the plan of finance. Our objective here was to take a look at Pulaski's capital improvement plan, your list of, of projects for five years, and recommend strategies to fund the, these capital projects. We have two goals here. One, we want to make efficient use of, of your cash balances. Take advantage of cash that's available to, to spend on projects, but not, not going so deeply that you leave the town in a vulnerable position. And then secondly, utilizing debt, but doing it intelligently, understanding what are the, what's your debt capacity here in, in the town? How affordable will this debt be that we, that we issue? So, so we've looked at, at all of those aspects and I'll, and I'll be presenting that to you. Our methodology was, was this, identifying the capital projects. So we started with the, the five-year plan. We've added some projects and talking with staff that are likely to come up in five years. Some may not be known with precision, the exact cost of, of these items, but we didn't want to leave them off the list. Next, we took a, we compiled six years of history of the town, looking at your audited financials and the, the results for fiscal '23, which have not been audited yet, and forecasted ahead over the next five years. How, how does the town look? Is there structural balance here in the town? Then we made an assumption about how much fund balance should you maintain from year to year? And then, as a fallout of that, how much of that cash is available to pay for, for capital projects? So those are the basic steps that we followed. So, this is the, this is the capital improvement plan with a few additions based on discussions with staff. These are the items that the, the town is envisioning over the next five years. There's always more clarity in the early years than there is in the out years. So there's more projects listed here for fiscal '24, fewer in the out years. No doubt, as we go down the road, additional needs are going to be identified and those will be added to the list. But this is a good summary of, of where we are in fiscal '24. And I'll, I'll leave with you some paper copies, so you'll have this information to refer to. We broke things out into equipment and then other capital projects. And I'll, I'll, I'll describe the reason that, that we do that. But for equipment in fiscal '24, you have some police vehicle replacement, I believe that is. Also, a V-dot match required for Main Street, K-9 facility, and so forth. What, what was added to this, I think, compared to a year ago, was a land purchase, which the council has authorized, that's 1.2 million. An economic development opportunity with the Housing Authority, 250,000. Now, our fiscal year is half, halfway over and the town is already committed to using cash balance for land purchase. So, so we're pretty much assuming that most of fiscal '24 will be cash funded. In fiscal '25, some additional projects. A big one is the fire department building. 2.7 million is an estimate for that project. Then going into '26, have a fire engine. I believe it's a second fire engine in fiscal '28. So two of them coming up in the five, five-year period. So these are some pretty significant projects that we want to plan for. In the out years, probably after five years, is a maintenance facility and that's a large ticket item as well, 3.5 million. So, some policy recommendations. Firstly, we wanted to establish some parameters here for this, this analysis. One policy recommendation is that you establish a minimum unrestricted fund balance. What's an unrestricted fund balance? Well, that's essentially, you take the revenues of the town, you subtract expenses, and what falls out is, is your fund balance. Part of that may be committed to certain things. It may, may be that you've received grants and so you're, you have an obligation or a commitment to use part of your funds to comply with a grant requirement. There may be some other needs that, that are required of the town. The unrestricted portion is, is really at your disposal. And it may include some things like assigned fund balances, things that the town plans to use that, that cash for, some committed fund balances. But these are things that the Town Council, in an emergency in particular, could overrule, that you could, you could change your statute and allow the use of that, that fund balance. So, so the definition of unrestricted fund balance is pretty broad, but it's essentially funds that the Town Council can access. Now, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that every locality have a policy for maintaining a minimum unrestricted fund balance. When we look at your, your unrestricted fund balance over the last five years, it's varied between 8%, that's about one month's worth of revenues, from about 8% up to 30%. So we're recommending that, as a starting point, that the town establish as a minimum unrestricted fund balance, maintaining 25% as a percentage of revenues. And that gives us a good guidepost, because if you're maintaining 25% of your unrestricted funds at the end of the year, that, that sort of indicates how much is available in cash to be used for capital projects. And so that's, that's the assumption that, that we use. The second recommendation is to establish a capital projects fund, to sort of, sort of mechanize the system where you evaluate your unrestricted balance every year and then you automatically move the excess amount into the capital projects fund. And this will give you a lot of good guidance, I think, when you're making policy decisions as to how much cash is available that we can tap into to use for, for new capital projects. So that's our recommendation, formalize that and establish a capital projects fund. Another recommendation is to use equipment lease purchase for equipment financing. So you have a lot of different options, different ways to finance, you know, projects and equipment. We think, VML-Vaco advises that you take full advantage of equipment lease purchase when you're financing equipment. That is, when you don't have cash that you want to apply to, to equipment, equipment lease purchase is a good way to, to go. What is this? It's basically a, a bank loan, but this is one, one part of the banking industry where banks are very competitive in wanting to offer equipment lease financing to local governments. So, VML-Vaco is, is an entity that goes out and we, we issue RFPs for localities that are financing with equipment lease purchase. And we typically get a number of proposals and we, we almost always end up with very competitive rates. Also, with equipment lease purchase financing, a lot of times, if you're doing police cars, you may be financing those over five years or so. It's relatively short-term financing. So the, the interest rates tend to be lower for a lot of equipment that you do because the term is lower. Another thing about equipment lease purchase financing is that it's a lot simpler. The equipment serves as collateral, so it's a lot simpler than doing a general obligation bond where you have to involve bond counsel, sometimes a bank counsel, custody agent, get a rating agency review, all of these things, you avoid a lot of that. So, so in our analysis here, we're assuming that you'll, you'll be using some equipment lease purchase financing. So that's the, that's the stage, I want to set the stage. And then this is our, our recommendation for how to fund the capital improvement plan. So on this page, page 10, we've added a column here with the funding source for each of these things. So for the, the large equipment that the town is envisioning, we're recommending lease purchase financing. So that would be for one fire engine. And then for the equipment that's being financed, the other equipment that's, that's sizable enough that, that, you know, we're likely to get good competitive bids. Some of the small ticket items under 100,000, we recommend just use cash for those, those items, probably the most cost-effective way. Again, we're assuming that for fiscal '24, everything in this column is cash funded. A lot of this has already been committed to cash, so we're just gonna keep it, keep it there. But because we're using so much cash this year, the next year, in order to maintain a healthy fund balance, all of your capital projects really should be financed through a debt issuance. And I'm leaving out the $45,000 equipment item, but the, the other items would lend themselves to a general obligation bond issue. When I say bond issue, that could be issued through Virginia Resources Authority or through a bank loan, but it seems to make sense. I'll show you your fund balances and you'll see why I'm recommending using debt in fiscal '25. Also, in fiscal '26, equipment lease purchase financing would be a good option there. And in '27, using equipment lease financing for the $200,000 item. Forget if that's a backhoe. Forget if that's a backhoe or front loader, it's some heavy equipment. And then cash fund the smaller item. So this is a blueprint that hopefully will be helpful to you forward. This will change as assumptions change, as we get the financial results that are audited for this year. We want to update all of these things, but right now, this is how it looks, using a combination of cash and debt financing. So moving ahead to page 12, this is what things look like if we follow this blueprint. In terms of outstanding debt, Town of Pulaski has what I would consider a low level of debt today and declining. So we would be adding some on, particularly in fiscal '25 and some after that. But even with the addition of this, your amount of bonded, this means general obligation debt of the town, will total about 0.6% of your taxable assessed value, just as a benchmark. That's a pretty low level of debt. The Virginia Constitution allows you to go up to 10%. Very few localities get close to that. But Moody's, the rating agency, considers a locality to be strong if it has under 1.7% of taxable assessed value. VRA uses under 2%. So you're well below that in terms of evaluating the amount of outstanding debt. Now, we also want to look at affordability. If you look at your annual debt service requirements, currently, debt service makes up about 2% of your total expenses. With the additional debt, it would go up to around 5%. Again, it's a very affordable level, I would say, at this point. The unrestricted fund balance, here's where we're recommending that you maintain a fund balance equal to 25% of general fund revenues. So the blue bars are history. And we haven't audited '23 yet, but those are historical percentages. And one thing you see here is you had a declining fund balance, you know, '18, '19, '20, perhaps related to COVID, maybe other circumstances. The town has made very strong progress, I would say, from 2020 through last fiscal year in building a healthy fund balance. This is a very good, strong and good news story that I would commend management and council for doing that. And 2024, because we're assuming we're cash funding everything that's on the CIP list, this fund balance is going to drop a bit. And so we want to, and that's fine, that's fine if it's temporary and we have a long-term plan. But I think we want to try to build the fund balance back up. So using debt in fiscal '25, one part of the reasoning for doing that is that allows you to build up your fund balance. You don't want the town to be in a vulnerable position. And we think that's a greater likelihood if you drop below the 25% mark. When you go around the state, when you go around the Commonwealth, you'll see a lot of different percentages. So we're looking at Pulaski's history of maintaining a fund balance, looking at the source of revenues, what are likely to be revenues that are more vulnerable to being interrupted, for instance, in order to come up with 25%. It may be in the future, if you're maintaining the 25%, you may want to pump that up a little bit more. I'm talking to a town tomorrow night, their goal is 40%. So it's kind of unique to each town and each town's unique circumstances. In Pulaski, a large percentage of your revenues come from property taxes, particularly real estate taxes. Real estate taxes are a little bit more immune from volatility because the rate is set, it kind of sticks usually for a while. If the economy is impacted, it takes a while to see any impact of that on property assessed value. So real estate taxes are kind of a good reliable source of revenue. Machinery and tools taxes, on the other hand, and that's a big source of revenue here, that can be more vulnerable to economic conditions. So there's a mix here in Pulaski. And so I think 25% is a good prudent goal to establish right now. Now, I talked about the capital projects fund. And we really can't establish this until the fund balance has been built up and you're over 25%. And we're doing this capital projects fund in a very conservative way. We're saying, we're going to look at the unrestricted fund balance at the end of the previous year and then transfer those funds over into the current year. So it's going to be a one-year lag between building the unrestricted fund balance to when those funds are available. So in 2026, you're in a pretty healthy position above 25%. So in 2027, we're assuming that we could transfer funds into a capital projects fund and earmark those to be used for capital projects. So in 2027, the first, well, the first line here, 2.9 million, that is 25% of revenues. That's the fund balance you want to maintain. The additional amount is over and above that, that's 637,000. So if that's transferred into a capital projects fund, that's the starting point with the capital projects fund. We had 87,000 in cash-funded projects identified in this proposal. So that should leave you at the end of '27 with 550,000 in funds in the capital projects fund. In '28, make an additional contribution, about $1 million. That should give you about 1.6 million to be used for capital projects. And you happen to have a large capital project in 2026, so we take that out. 1.3 million leaves 300,000. So that's sort of how the flow of this works. And we think this would be a good tool for the county to use, good planning tool, you know, to be able to look ahead and see, how much flexibility do we have? Are we maintaining the balance? And then here's the reward of maintaining the balance and having this kind of strong growth. Some conclusions and recommendations. The town has grown its unrestricted fund balance each year since 2020. So it has cash that is becoming available for projects. And in fact, 2024, we're going to cash fund all of those projects. And we recommend maintaining a, or establishing a capital projects fund, kind of making that a systemic part of the county management. And then by doing that, you would need to issue debt in the out years at these levels. In fiscal '25, 3.4 million dollars for various projects. And then in '26 and '27, some of the equipment projects that could be financed with very competitive rates and usually probably a little bit shorter term than a general obligation bond that we're looking at doing next year. Now, we did end up in '27 or '28 with a pretty strong position. And so there was a fire truck that could, we could have used equipment leasing for that, but there's sufficient cash to use it for the fire truck. Now, this maintenance facility is coming up. There may be other requirements as well. So I want to reprogram that depending on what the needs are. But at this point, I think this is a plan that, you know, you can feel comfortable with, seems very achievable. And again, I think that the town is doing a good job of maintaining a structural balance. I think you've taken some steps recently to help ensure that. This is something we want to continue to keep an eye on. Economic conditions can throw things out of whack, you know, very quickly. But at this point in time, we feel good about where the town is. Now, probably done about 15 minutes already. So if you'd like, I can, on the water and sewer fund, I can skip to conclusions, if you like. So that's on page 17. So very similar approach here to what we did with the general fund. With an enterprise fund, like the water fund and the sewer fund, the terminology is a little bit different. Here, we're talking about a statement of revenues, expenses, and net position. So this is like an enterprise. This looks more like a business and the financials are kind of stated in that way. Depreciation is a line item in an enterprise fund. So here, we're recommending targeting an unrestricted net position, kind of a counterpart to what the general fund has with unrestricted fund balance. This is similar to that. And targeting 25% of revenues here as well. The amounts in excess of that can also be reserved for capital projects. You want to keep those separate. You want to keep the water fund and the sewer fund separate so you know that they are self-supporting enterprises. You would have two separate capital projects fund, which essentially is a line, it's an item that your staff will be keeping track of. For the water fund, over the five-year planning purpose, planning period, the equipment lease purchase financing could be used to fund the $840,000 meter replacement project. But we feel like there are healthy cash flows in the water fund and that it appears to us at this point that the other projects in the water fund can be cash funded. So at this point, we're not advocating for debt. Now, what this is based on, now let me give a caveat here. So what we did is we took your revenues, expenses, and your operating income and loss as a starting point. We made some adjustments to that, adding back depreciation because that's an accounting item. It's not actually using cash. But debt service payments do actually use cash. So we made some adjustments to come up with a number that we felt was actual cash that would be available. So when you look at the water fund, it ran a deficit back in 2018, but it's had a surplus in every year since then. So even we even applied a conservative factor, growth factor, for revenues below what your actual, you know, results have been over the last five years. And we're still seeing a surplus in each year. And we've reviewed this with staff and they're in agreement. So what this is telling us is that, you know, this fund appears to be in a good position at this point. And again, we want to keep monitoring. There's never, you know, final judgment. It's something that is always evolving, but I think we were encouraged by that. On the sewer fund, it was actually a deficit in 2019. There was a small deficit in 2020. But 2022 ended up with a very good surplus. The budget and, or I should say, the preliminary results for 2023 indicate another surplus. So we think that this fund is on a strong footing. There are only two capital projects on the sewer side. And at this point, we feel like those projects can be cash funded. Again, we want to keep a close look and we're happy to help do that as your municipal advisor because I think that's very important to do, to give you as much of an early warning. But I have to say, I think that the town is in a strong position overall, including all three of the funds that we've looked at. Especially on the general fund side, I think if you use an appropriate amount of debt for some of your projects, you can build the cash fund balance where it needs to be, keep it there, and I think that'll bode well for the town going forward. Happy to take any questions.
I just have a couple of quick questions. First, thank you. We appreciate you being here. I absolutely think this is awesome. You know, I'd say for five years, there's been conversations about, you know, us trying to get, maybe look a little further into the future and we weren't in a position, as you saw a few years back, to really think that way. But as position has changed by the work of Ms. Bertram and her staff, we've really needed, you know, to forecast and make decisions based off that. And so, I mean, I think, you know, as a group, this is the information we should be using and thinking this way. On your projections, obviously, I know you guys looked at the debt side of when things were going to roll off and the capital expenditures. Was there any, on the revenue side, do you guys account for any revenue change that would affect unassigned fund balance, expectations of revenue growth or expectations of things like salary increases or things of that nature? Are those things factored into it or is it, or do you kind of look at those things and assume that they're going to stay the same?
Yeah, we had some pretty good data that the town staff maintains that was very useful on the revenue side. A lot of granular detail, especially on the general fund revenues, which allowed us to look at different sources of revenue and look at growth rates for those sources of revenues. So we're not just putting one percentage on all general fund revenues, but we're kind of breaking it down, looking individually. That allows you to do a sanity check. If something is, you know, is really, you know, has jumped up very high, you know, trying to understand why that is. Is that something that will likely continue or is it a one-time situation? So I think we had good data to use on the revenue side, on expenses. We didn't build in, you know, assumptions about percentage, salary increases and that sort of thing. But in the audited financials, I think personnel is, you know, is a line item in there. So we simply looked at history and kind of extrapolated ahead for each of those expense items.
So you guys would have made some assumptions towards expense lines growing?
Yes. Oh, yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lotterberg.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to stay around for a few minutes because the next presentation is an annual audit report. So you can update your [inaudible].
All right. Next is Emily Vires from Robinson Farmer and Cox Associates. Hello again.
Thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you all. I'm a creature of habit, so we're going to do a lot of the same things that we did last year. You don't have a copy of the audited financial statements in front of you. Jackie does have some copies for you so that if you'd like a hard copy, you have one with her that you can grab on your way out. I don't know if you all have had a chance to review the financial statements electronically at all. I don't know if you all have had a chance to review the financial statements electronically at all in advance. My contact information, though, is on the front of the audit presentation file that you have in front of you. So once you have the financial statements and have had some time to review them, you're welcome to reach out to me if you have any questions or need anything as you're trying to review. We'll dive right in. We'll start on page two of the presentation file that you all have. This goes over the three different types of auditors' reports that are included in your financial statements. The first is the independent auditor's report. This is essentially where we state or opine whether we think your financial statements are materially correct in accordance with all of the applicable accounting standards. You all have a clean, unmodified opinion. So that means that we think that the numbers as presented meet all of those accounting standards that you're supposed to follow. The second type of report is what I usually refer to as the yellow book. Here, we take a look at internal controls at a high level, as well as some compliance-related items that the APA requires we take a look at. We did have one item related to material proposed audit adjustments as part of our procedures. You might remember, we've had this on or off for the last several years. I think maybe last year, we didn't have this finding. It's not uncommon to have it localities. We tend to be the third or fourth eyes looking at things. You all operate on a cash basis, for the most part, day-to-day and year-to-year on your operations. So this adjustment or this finding relates to getting your cash basis numbers to modified and then to full of code for accounting purposes. The journal entries are included later on in the presentation so that you can see those proposed adjustments. As part of the compliance-related procedures that we performed, we did not have any material compliance-related items to report. The last type of auditor's report relates to uniform guidance. Because you expended more than $750,000 in federal funds during the year, you did have to undergo a single audit. So here, we take a look, sort of like the yellow book opinion, the internal controls and then the overarching compliance requirements for the uniform guidance and then program-specific requirements as well for the programs that are selected for testing. You all have a clean, unmodified opinion. So that means, related to the federal programs, no internal controls and no compliance-related items to report. On page three, we've got your general fund summary for the last five years. This comes from exhibit five of the report. This is on the modified basis of accounting and is probably pretty similar to the numbers that were used in the VML VACO analysis that was performed. We've got your annualized growth rates off to the right-hand side so that you can see how some of your revenues and some of your expenditures have grown or declined over the last five years. A few things that I wanted to point out, I'll try not to go too far into the numbers. I know that I like talking about that probably more than you all like hearing about it. You can see that intergovernmental, again, increase this year. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse continuing to talk about ARPA and CARES money. But you recognize 2.4 million in ARPA fund revenues in the, in the general fund during 2023, of that 1.7 million related to salaries, so general government salaries. So a lot of that 1.7 falls down to the change in fund balance that you see of an overall increase of almost 2.2 million. A lot of that has to do with the fact that ARPA funds were used for salaries in the general fund. You did use $715,000 for capital projects during the year. And then the remainder of the ARPA funds were used for some vehicle and equipment replacement within the general fund. You did use about $2 million in your water and sewer fund. You just can't see that here. So you used 4.4 million of your ARPA funds in 2023. You have about 1.8 million left to be used in fiscal year 2024. It has to be obligated by December 2024. And then I think that if you take out the effects of ARPA and CARES Act revenues in '21, '22, and '23, your intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues sit roughly between 3 and 3.5 million every year for your more consistent intergovernmental revenues. So that might be something that you can keep in mind as you look at the capital project planning for the next few years. Related to expenditures, oh, you do see that charges for services increased pretty significantly during the year, as well as expenses related to public works. You all used to use Pulaski County for your garbage collection. And so that was treated in your, that was reported in your custodial or fiduciary fund because you were really collecting the fees that they charged, keeping an admin fee associated with it, and then remitting all the funds back to the county. Now that you're paying a third-party vendor and you're charging your own fees and you're setting that, that information is merged in your general fund for 2023. So you see a pretty significant increase in charges for services, as well as an increase in the public works expense. I think the revenue related to that was 860,000 during the year, and then the expense was 680,000 during the year. So you did, a little bit of that did fall down to your fund balance in '23. I think that that was about all I had to talk about on page three, unless anybody else wants to go into the numbers some more. On page four, we take a look at your unassigned fund balance and then your cash balances related to your expenditures, where it sounds like they may look at revenues. We usually look at the expenditure side of things. On your cash balances, I did try, try to take out the effects of some of that unearned revenue related to the ARPA funds that you still have sitting, sitting in your grants fund that'll be funded with your, with your general fund. So you can see that your ending fund balance increased, or your reserve balances, sorry, increased pretty significantly during 2023, even above the estimate that we thought they might land at. Now, if you take those, as mentioned, you already used 1.4, 1.5 million for that purchase of property. If that's taken out of those amounts and assumed that it was expended, your balances are closer to 32% and 33% there. So a lot more in line with where you were last year. So I think that your balances are great this year. And then even after you take out that property purchase, you still have pretty, pretty good reserve balances in place. GFOA recommends that you have two months of reserves on hand, which is 17%, roughly. We've always been conservative and recommended 20% to 25%. So I think that our, the, the recommendations for your reserve balances are pretty comparable between us and then the previous presentation. On the next couple of pages, we just have pie charts so that you can see where revenues are generated and where you typically expend your funds by function. Obviously, the intergovernmental piece of the pie is significantly larger related to ARPA this year. But as was noted, general property and then other local taxes make up, you know, in the past, close to 60% of your overall revenues. And I think that that's a pretty consistent percentage over, if you take out that intergovernmental CARES and ARPA fund money. Your other local taxes is predominantly meals tax of about $1 million in 2023, sales tax of 750,000, and business licenses of about 500,000. So those are your three strongest other local taxes that you bring in outside of property taxes. On general, on the general fund expenditures, you can see that the pie chart really doesn't change a whole lot. And that's pretty consistent with what we see at most places. So you can see where you typically spend by function. On page seven, we've got your long-term obligation summary. You have your general fund as well as your water and sewer funds. This includes actual debt issuances, as well as accrual amounts for compensated absences, pension and OPEB and things like that. You did pay off your backhoe and street sweeper. I think you paid about an additional 90,000 during the year to get that debt paid off. In the water and sewer fund, you had a VRA issuance of $2.7 million during the year for a capital project. You've drawn down about 300,000 of that as of June 30th. So I would expect that your debt balances in the water and sewer fund will probably go up over the next year as you finish that project out. One thing that I did want to mention that I'm sure that you all are aware of, I'm sure that management and staff are aware of, but your VRA debt issuance in the water and sewer fund does have a covenant that you maintain 25% of unrestricted cash to expenditure balances. So you'll want to keep an eye on that throughout the year to make sure that your unrestricted cash in your water and sewer funds is meeting your 25% of expenditures. On page eight is a communication with governance letter. You guys have a pretty standard boilerplate letter. Didn't change a whole lot from last year, other than rolling forward some of the dates. No changes in accounting estimates during the year. No new accounting standards were implemented. We had a couple that we evaluated, but none that were applicable for you all, so we didn't have to implement anything. If we had difficulties dealing with management, that would be disclosed to you all. I think, I hope that I have conveyed how much we enjoy working with your staff. We think you've got a great group of people. I'm sad that Darlene won't be here. We've enjoyed working with Darlene. I think she's done a lot of great things for the town. You know, I could name a few things, but I'm sure that you all are well aware of all of the things that have been done. So I hope that the, the next town manager can keep those steps going. But we really enjoy working with everybody. Everybody tries to prioritize us and make sure that we can get in and out and be as efficient as possible to get you all numbers as quick as we can. The next few pages, starting on 11, are the journal entries that I mentioned. So I won't talk about those, but they're there if you want to look at them. Page 14 are the management recommendations or comments from the audit. These are things that don't rise to the level of internal control deficiencies to be reported in the report, but areas where we think we might be able to provide some guidance for best practices or internal control strengthening. So that's there for you all to take a look at. I don't usually go into those in too much detail. And then on page 15 are the upcoming standards that'll need to be considered for implementation over the next few years. It seems like every year, Gatsby has more standards for us to consider. So that's just so that you're aware of what's on the horizon related to the upcoming standards. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to try to go over them. Or you've got my contacts, so you're welcome to reach out if anything comes up later. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No questions, just smiles.
All right. And our next presentation is our ARPA update from Jackie Morse.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'm happy, along with the last presentation, very happy to present to you an update on items and projects that have been completed and ones that are still in progress that have been possible with the ARPA funding. And to start with, I just wanted to give a recap on what ARPA is. And that is an economic stimulus bill that was passed by Congress to speed up the country's recovery from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Direct federal funding was allocated to localities, and the town of Pulaski received $9,40,920. This was received in two installments, the first one in June of 2021 and the second in July of 2022. Of the funds received, we have expended $7,57,581 and have a remaining of $1,983,339. And Emily had mentioned this in her presentation, but these funds have to be obligated by December 31, 2024, and they have to be fully expended by December 31, 2026. So as you can see, it's taken us two and a half years to spend a little over the $7 million. When ARPA first started, department heads were asked to complete a wish list of what was needed. And a committee was formed, which currently, the ARPA committee consists of Ms. Bircham, Sarah Grimm from the police department, and myself. When the requests are submitted, we go through an approval process. There were very strict guidelines as to how you could spend the ARPA funds. And they have relaxed a little, but we still have to follow certain guidelines that they have set. The demand of product was an issue, as I'm sure you are aware, aware when we came out from COVID, the demand for supplies and contractors was an issue. Contractors were booked up. We had back orders of supplies. So that has improved. We still struggle with that a little, but we've been able to make progress, as you are about to see. So the first thing, the projects completed, was the skate park and the basketball court on First Street. Not only were we able to provide the court and for the skate park, but the fencing, the grass that was planted, and signs also for the park was installed. The bike park for on Route 99, this allowed for the prep work for the track, the clearing of brush and removal, and the developing of the parking area. The basketball and pickleball courts on Sixth Street. The basketball court is still a work in progress. We have been able to get the court, asphalt was put down. We still have the gold to install and the striping to be done. But weather permitting, that may be spring before that actually is done. Pickleball court, y'all are very well aware. It's been up and running. People have been using it. I think there's temporary striping down. If they hadn't already in the spring, they will be putting the permanent striping down on that court as well. We were also able to replace the playground equipment in five parks within the town, those being Heritage Park, Kiwanis Park, Sixth Street, Valley Street, and Gatewood. With the playgrounds, this also included benches were provided, picnic tables were replaced or added, and trash receptacles were also replaced. The next addition was the police department got to bring in the K-9 unit. And we got to welcome sweet little Juno to the town family. This also provided her vet care, her food, the training that she had to undergo, her training devices and equipment. UTVs were provided to the police department and the fire department. And a charging station was installed on First Street, with this also has a five-year lease for the charging station. New signs have been replaced. These are the welcome signs at the Route 99 entrance into town and also as you come down Draper's Mountain, as you enter Town Limits. We have installed a sign on Interstate, which also provides direction to historical downtown Pulaski. And currently in progress, we will be replacing or adding a sign to the train station and to the Draper Mountain Trails. There was a new sign added to the front of the municipal building, which was for the Pulaski Police Department that you can see out front. And we just recently installed the welcome sign back at the Y intersection leading into town. And the businesses on West Main Street were also provided with signage outside of their locations. Safety equipment and tools was something that was very much needed for all departments. So we were able to provide for the filter plant, harnesses, respirator mask and replacement filters, ladders and uniforms. The fire department received masks, gas detection monitors, and CPR Lucas device. The police department received flashlights, light rails, and fire extinguishers for all of their police vehicles and cameras that they're able to utilize within the town. Public Works received uniforms, boots, and much-needed tools to use on water breaks. During COVID, there were positions that were frozen, and we were able to bring those back with ARPA funding. Those were two positions in the general properties and public works, the mechanic for public works, and a community resource officer. With the community resource, we were able to provide this individual with the materials needed for citizens within the town. We were able to provide the fire prevention materials, NOCS box, security boxes for citizens, and the Project Lifesaver equipment as well. Now, items that I've shown you have been actual items that are visible for ones to see as what has been done. But there have been a lot that have been behind the scenes that people don't realize what is involved to make certain things possible, and that being with the water and sewer department. The water tank rehab consisted of rehab on five water tanks. And to my knowledge, I don't think this has ever been done on the tanks within the town. This consisted of Bertha Street, Bridge Street, Highland Terrace, Ridge Avenue, and Pepper's Ferry Road. They cleaned the tanks inside and out. They removed any sign of rust. They repaired breaks, tears, any type of soft spot within the tanks, and then was able to paint it with an epoxy liner inside and out. They also were able to install an OSHA-approved exterior ladder with a safety climb device and a lockable ladder guard for the tanks as well. And the second picture you see is the water line replacement on Main Street that was completed. Another area that needed much improvement was the filter plant. Two of the items here that you see was for a roof on the filter plant itself and over the chemical storage building was replaced. And the filter plant had numerous items that needed to be repaired, was long overdue, and needed serious attention. And this is one of the areas, which is the pulsator and the baffle. And I do not know if any of you And I do not know if any of you have ever toured the filter plant, have been up there. If you haven't, I encourage you to go either as a group or individual. I went, I never knew, I knew it was just a filter plant and they make water. But there is so much more involved, so much more to it that people, it's really interesting to see. This particular equipment, the pulsator and baffles was able to be replaced. This piece of equipment had not been replaced in 34 years. So as you see on the left, this is what it looked like. When they came in, the contractor came in to remove this device, they literally disintegrated and broke apart. So we have now been able to provide them with this new piece of equipment, which collects the water that's brought in from Gatewood, filters it out, draws the sediment, any type of debris out, separates it into sludge and then filters the water out into another area where they actually treat it to provide it to the citizens. So again, very much-needed piece of equipment. The next part is the pump stations at 4A, which is located on Door Highway. 4B is located in the Worno area near James Hardy and Kreiser. And this is a project that is still ongoing and will be ongoing for a while because this has been a long process, a lot of equipment involved that needs repair and replaced. So this will be a continuous thing throughout ARPA. We were able to take care of items that were in the CIP. This included equipment for Public Works, which again was another department was very much needed. As you can see, this is a picture of a mini excavator that was provided. Public Works also received a tractor. They replaced the salt spreaders and motors, a sickle bar and side mowers. We replaced a police vehicle and an upgrade to the range. New Christmas wreaths and banners were purchased. And again, there's more multiple items that were replaced and repaired at the filter plant, such as the design and services associated with filters, the air scourer and polymer feed system, as well as the flow measuring device, the filter tank alarm monitoring system, the storage building for equipment and chemicals, the soda ash feeder and the automatic flushing devices. Paving was also made possible for streets that are classified as ineligible. And this, we do receive street and highway reimbursement from VDOT, which is for eligible streets. These are roads that are heavily traveled. Your Memorial Drive, Route 99, Route 11, possibly some of leading into neighborhoods. Your ineligible are going to be your dead-end streets, your alleyways or just neighborhoods that there's not a lot of homes there that doesn't have a lot of wear and tear. So there's not a lot of maintenance there to be done. Seven streets were chosen to be repaved and these particular streets had not been repaid for 35 years. These were three alleys of State Street, Pine Street and Chestnut, four streets, which was Winter, Hurst, Mulberry Lane and Lake Street. Water meter and transmitter replacements was also made possible. And this is something that's ongoing as well. This is one of the areas that we really struggled with, was trying to get the product in. When we did the first order for these meter replacements, it took six months for them to come in. So as soon as they come in, we immediately placed another order and it was another six-month waiting list. So those have been completed. We still have several that are in progress. One would be in the Splash Park, which will be located on the Door Highway area at Cool Springs. Items were not available until late October, early November. We still have work to be done on the restroom facilities, as well as the water lines for the splash pad. So hopefully, spring, we get through winter, that this will be up and running. The INI study is still in progress. The radio project and radio engineer for police and fire, rehab for other services associated with the pump stations at 4A and 4B and Kreiser, sidewalks for the north and south side and the utility relocation at the airport. So as you can see, we have been busy. We have made good use of the ARPA funds. We have provided new equipment. We have made much-needed repairs and provided items to staff to assure safety and efficiency for their jobs. We have also began a tracking asset management scheduled on these new items and repairs, which I feel will be beneficial to budgeting and maintaining the life expectancy of the equipment. While ARPA has created extra work on staff with contacting vendors, contractors, ordering supplies, following projects through to completion, recording, reporting every penny spent, it has been worth it. I do feel that with the ARPA funds, the department has more involved with their budgets and measures put in place to control spending, that this has helped us to increase our financial stability, as you've seen this evening. It has definitely improved our fund balance, again, as you've seen. And I believe it has set the stage for us to be able to develop a financial plan for our future. And I look forward to sharing with you in the future what we have utilized the remaining ARPA funds on. Have any questions about anything?
So of the seven, the seven million that's spent already, the projects in progress are included in the seven million?
Part of it has, some of it we've had to make deposits on, so there will be additional funds to come out of that. So that will come out of the 1.9 that's remaining.
Yes, that was my, I guess my curiosity is the 1.7 or whatever the number was that's yet to be spent. How much of that, I understand it's not spent yet, but how much of it is already committed? Is there, you know, do we kind of have an idea of what is still out there that needs to be decided upon before the end of the year or end of next year?
Yeah, we have, with what's still in progress, it's probably 1.5 of that is already committed to these projects that you see here. So it's probably a little under five that has not been allocated to anything.
A little under 500,000?
Yes.
What we have found is sometimes the projects that even as we've approved them have come in at different costs. And so we've deliberately not committed every dollar. Also realizing that something may come up in the next six, eight months that needs to be done. And we have the flexibility, as Jackie mentioned, to, as long as we obligate the money by the end of 2024, we have until 2026 to actually accomplish that. Good example, the Hardy, yeah, the Hardy project, we will complete next month under what we call substantial completion. But a generator that was part of that project is still another six or eight months from now before delivery. So there are certain things that we won't pay for, even though they've been in progress and we've committed the funds to them. But not a lot of flexibility at this point. And then it was mentioned in a couple of presentations, the fact that we spent some of the ARPA money on staffing. We did that one year and then we actually absorbed those positions this past year. So we are not relying on ARPA for funding of positions. And I want that made clear. We used it as an opportunity to get fully staffed and to do some differential pay in order to encourage people to come to work for the town. But all of that's now in your general fund operating budget. You're not relying on ARPA. The ARPA money, we've tried to use for one-time expenditures, understanding that we won't get this kind of a windfall in the future.
And it looks like it was put to extremely good use everywhere. So that's, that was a very positive presentation. Thank you very much. That's awesome.
And one thing I wanted to mention with where we have to have the remaining funds obligated by December 31st of next year. Once you have obligated those funds to a project, if that project comes in under what you had budgeted for, you can't move that money around to another project that may have a shortfall. So we'll really have to watch every penny to make sure that we use every cent and not have to give anything back.
Oh, one quick question. Can we make this presentation available on the website? I think that would be, I'm sure that people are curious about this and we get to be able to have one place that they can see it.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, we'll move to the public hearing section now. Resolution 2023-62, appropriation of funds from the Virginia Department of Health. Could I get the staff report, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. We mentioned this project at a previous meeting, but this is the actual request to appropriate those funds that will be used to design and install a backwash filter system at our filter plant. And it's something that is, like many things there at the plant, haven't been replaced in 35-plus years. We have been very successful on this particular grant application to have the lion's share of this amount actually grant-funded or principal forgiveness is the technical term that the Department of Health uses. So we'll have a minimum or minimal amount that will have to be debt financed unless we decide to cash fund that later, which we may very well do, given some of what you heard earlier on the VML Daco presentation. So we'll be back to you in the future for the actual debt funding if we decide to go that route on the remaining balance. But we were very fortunate to get the lion's share of this as grant-funded and not having to pay debt service on the total amount. This is the direct opposite of a very recent debt issue that we went through where we had very little in principal forgiveness and mostly debt to be issued.
I just, I do have one question. With the Water Department, if I can ask that. What do you, there's obviously been a lot of, a lot of things addressed that have needed to be addressed for some time. What do you see as the next big project in the Water Department? Or do we pretty well have a handle on, on everything once we move past this backwash system?
Well, the filter plant is 35 years old or more. I think some people would love to see a brand-new filter plant. To replace it would cost a lot. So we don't have that in the plans currently. But I think with what we have done with ARPA money and what we continue to do, we will be in much, much better shape than we have ever been. And we certainly are extending the life expectancy of that plant with everything that we have done. So I don't see us, as in the near term, needing to necessarily do that. We've spent a lot of money, not just at the filter plant, but as you saw and heard, we have repaired five tanks with the Brookmont project that is being funded and should be completed in April of this year. We will have a much larger tank that actually the county has contributed a little bit of money to its construction. And that will allow us to eliminate a significant number of small tanks because of the way that project has been constructed. That will reduce our maintenance costs for the smaller ones. So I think we have really done just about everything that we could possibly do. There's always more, but I think the increments are going to be smaller. Your attention is really going to have to be focused now in the immediate future to sewer for two reasons. One, the INI presentation that you all heard recently, because we're sending clean water to Pepper's Ferry to be treated. So if we can eliminate the INI, that will certainly assist in the reduction of that expense, although they have certain fixed costs, so everybody's going to participate in that. But even more so, the Kreiser plant, which will have less demand on it once the Hardy project comes online, which again is supposed to be mid-January, it does need to be replaced. And so in that capital project list, you saw half a million dollars listed, I believe, for next year to replace that entire system there. Because we are spending a lot of money right now, again, ARPA-related on fixing or replacing small tanks or motors that are just wearing out on us. So water, I think you're in pretty good shape. Sewer, I think is going to need attention.
And if I, if I remember correctly, on the INI, there was, there's going to be recommendations come before council and once that's complete?
Yes.
Okay.
But we have, at this point, guesstimated, that's my best word at this point, what we think over five years we will need without necessarily identifying the specific areas that we'll work at. Some of what you will have coming back to you is the recommendations from the consultant as to where we probably would get the most bang for our bucks in terms of where we would start to deal with the INI.
Okay, perfect. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Does counsel have any other questions before we?
At some point, we talked about work that needed to be done at Gatewood. Is that still on the table or at the dam, I'm thinking?
There's a small amount of money that is over the next five years set aside for that. But I don't think that the thoughts that they had earlier are really the same. And we very recently, I think it's your last meeting, talked about what we know now that I'm not sure everybody knew or had forgotten as it related to our ability to draw water from the dam. But we've not had any significant issues there. We have done some replacements at the raw water insert from the dam, you know, that enters our system.
Right.
We've made improvements there.
Yep.
I think they, those may have in the past been categorized in some discussions and in the capital budget as improvements to Gatewood Dam when it really was
Maintenance.
downstream from the dam.
Okay, I got you.
But had to do with the water that was being drawn from
Gotcha.
the creek or water bed into our system.
Okay.
But someone made an interesting point, Jackie did, about visiting. I would love to find a time to schedule you all to visit, not just the filtration plant, but the improvements that we have made up at the old landfill as it relates to Police Department. We've done a major upgrade of our firing range. We are in the process of having designed a regional K-9 facility that will be placed up there. And we have an outstanding training facility, which has been mostly rehabbed by our Public Works staff. But I'd like for you to see how we are using the resources that the town has. We took you on a couple of, or at least one other tour. And if there's time in people's schedules over the next month or next several months, certainly with your new town manager mentioned these as areas that I think you all ought to have the opportunity to see. And your capital plan that was put in front of you, and I know I'm going on on something that's not even the purpose of the public hearing, but a future need is clearly our Public Works operations area. It is really abysmal. And unfortunately, out of sight, out of mind is something that happens not just here, but in every community. If you don't see it, if it's not broke, if there's water not coming out of the road, people don't think about that infrastructure that is hidden. So think about opportunities that maybe you all could visit some of these sites. And if we can't do it as a group individually, I'm sure all of the operators at each of these facilities would love to show you around.
Field trip.
And that's the reason for this public hearing. I apologize.
Any other questions before? Okay, then I will open the public hearing. And as no one's rushing the podium, I will close the public hearing. And then does counsel have any other questions? If not, if you'd like to make a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-62 appropriating funds for the Virginia Department of Health.
Say again.
May I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Quants?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
All right. Next are the three items that we added when we modified the public session. Do not remember which order those were, so they're now in my order.
Holiday schedule was the first.
That was the first one? Okay. The employee The employee holiday schedule, if someone would like to make a motion about what it is?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we modify the holiday schedule for the remaining portion of the year by adding an additional half-day on Friday, December twenty-second, which is already a half-day, so make it a full day of paid holiday, and make Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, also a full-day paid holiday.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that?
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
I think the staff that's still here approve that. They approve that also.
And those who are not here.
I think the next one is the town manager's contract. Would you like to do that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend Darlene Bircham's contract that ended on December thirty-first, and extend that through February twenty-ninth, with the understanding that our new town manager starts on February first, but we would like to retain her to benefit a transition period between the new manager.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Oh, and now I just thought of this, I probably said it before, but it's December, February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, just to be clear.
Yes. Leap year, you get an extra day.
Yeah.
And then the third was the deletion of some fund changes, or funding changes. How did we, do we ever say that? How did we?
Request to delete, remove from the town's financial reports, the due-to and due-from categories of funding that we do not anticipate would ever be received by the town, and this is at the recommendation or with the concurrence of the auditor, and this was pointed out to us during the recent audit.
Do we have the resolution number?
I don't think there's a resolution. I think we'll just have to add it. I think my, my thought is.
You just add it as a voice vote when you do it, did it two years ago from you, Dad.
And I think we just say pursuant to the December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three letter, the amounts. So how about this for a motion? A motion to authorize the town manager to zero out due-from and due-to funds listed in the audit, which are not expected to be received in the future pursuant to the letter from Ms. Bircham to the town council dated December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
All right. Public comment period. I have no slips, so we'll move.
They wore them out.
Yeah, I know. They all ran away.
I told you, you're going to work hard.
All right. So next is the consent agenda for your consideration is December fifth, twenty twenty-three, town council meeting minutes. If you had a chance to look at them, if someone would make a motion that we accept them?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt town council meeting minutes, December five, twenty twenty-three, as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
All right. Moving on is the counsel comments. Mr. East?
I would just like to say thank you, Ms. Bircham, for agreeing to stay on during the transition. We appreciate your continuing support. And it's obvious, I just want to comment on the presentations that we saw. It's obvious that we've been in very good hands under your leadership and Jackie. We appreciate everything you and your staff have done and the entire staff, so thanks for, for an amazing job. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
Happy holidays. And thanks to the staff.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah, just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And do want to reiterate, obviously, not to repeat, but I think the VML folks said that they were under retainer with us for a year, I think is what they said, and, you know, the work that you guys have done, and then to combine that with, you know, to using that tool, you know, you know, as we move forward over this next year and we think about the decisions, you know, that we have potentially in front of us, we can continue to use that tool and tweak it. And, and as, as things come up and we're aware of an expense, or aware of a revenue change, or anything that, you know, or as we come to a conversation about a, a building, or a conversation about an expense, or things of those natures, I think we take that information and bring it to the table with that conversation, you know, and, and as we, and allow that to be a guiding part of the decisions. It's always been kind of a missing piece, I think, over the last five years that I've been around, is it's always been a lot of thought put into things, but there wasn't really a framework to really kind of help guide that decision of what's that really going to do, you know, and what's the impact or effect of that based off what you were already planning on doing. And that tool is, is, is great currently, but it could be made greater if it's continually used, and will only get better, and our understanding of those numbers will only get better, you know, if we, if we keep using them and updating them. And, and hopefully, I'm, I'm sure Jackie and your team, it's just a tremendous amount of work to get to that place, but now that we're there, we just don't want to lose it, you know, and, and, and continue to grow with it. So it's, it's just phenomenal, you know, that you guys were able to do that. So I thank you and, and look forward to, to see the use of it.
Mr. Ratliff?
Once again, Mr. East and all of, Ms. Bircham, thank you for, once again, for staying around with our transaction and helping us through our difficult times to get such you and your staff to a better audit than we've had in the past. It's all on you guys. You guys did a wonderful job. Anybody in our community wants to know how your money's spent, get off the phone, get in here and get it. Don't be talking on the phone about it, okay? I want to wish everybody, staff, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'll be looking forward to seeing everybody in twenty-four, and y'all didn't want those days off. You were, right? No? Thank Ms. Bircham for that, too. And like I say, everybody have a great Christmas, Happy New Year.
Mr. Clontz?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Reese?
I just want to reiterate, but everybody else has said, special thanks to all our town employees. I know they work really hard day in, day out, and often don't get the appreciation that I think they deserve for all the hard work they do. So I hope that they take these couple of days, have some fun times with their families, friends, and hopefully take that as a small token of our appreciation for all the work that they do. And that also to reiterate that it's very, very reassuring to have an audit presentation where you can really just see everything in there and know that we're on the right track, and, you know, we can't always predict what the world's going to look like and what, you know, costs are going to be, but if at least we know where the money that we have is being spent and what it's being spent on, that's, that gets us a lot further away to where we're going to be. So, so thank you for everything. Appreciate that.
I'd just like to wish everyone Very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Remember when you pass people on the street to smile? It's not that hard to do. And just, you know, give everybody a little extra happiness and joy during this season, because it's very important that we, we all live here together and we need to be, remember each other. We're all just people, and just smile, say Merry Christmas, hold the door for them, thank them, stuff like that. It is that time of year, try to remember that. That's pretty much it for right now. Then the manager's report. You can go with yours now.
Well, first of all, I want to remind folks who weren't able to attend, but we did have, I think, four of you at the groundbreaking ceremony last Friday for the long-awaited facilitation of the McCarthy Building to be a brewery, and we're looking forward to that construction, and hopefully that will be open in the early, late spring or early summer of next year. I was not in town, but I understand that the tea party on Sunday, in spite of the rain, was a great success, and people had a lot of fun at that. And we did end up completing the transaction for the purchase of the property. So we are now the proud owners of some undeveloped property that I know in the town's future will hold a lot of opportunity for us to have new business as well as a new residence. So that's something that'll be on the list of things to do for a long time to come. I do want to say thank you to the counsel for your decision on the holidays. I know that I speak for every employee when I say that is much appreciated. As was just said, sometimes our people are not recognized for what they do, but they do a tremendous job on behalf of the citizens, and oftentimes only face criticism and don't get the compliments or the accolades. So I certainly appreciate that. And I want to announce that with the counsel's approval, we will be issuing a thousand-dollar bonus to every full-time employee after the first of the year, and a smaller amount to our permanent part-time employees. But again, I appreciate the counsel's support of my recommendation to recognize the well-deserved recognition of our employees. They do a lot. We're not necessarily as able as our larger community representatives to do things for our employees, but everything that you do is much appreciated, and I'm sure you will hear from many of them their personal thanks. And I want to thank the counsel for being supportive of all the changes that we have made that I think have put us in the right direction for the future. So thank you, and you all have a blessed holiday, and I know that our employees will have one as well, thanks to you all.
Thank you. Just a reminder of future council meetings. January second, twenty twenty-four, town council meeting has been canceled. We got a day, too. And then January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, council session, I mean, closed session will